Sinclair to open us in prayer.
All right, let's pray. Lord, I just want to say thank you, Lord, for another day, thank you for another day of life, Lord. I just asked you, Lord, that you'd be with our armed services, Lord, all of our emergency response personnel, Lord. Keep all of those people safe and healthy, Lord. Lord, I ask you, Lord, that if there be anyone among us, Lord, that's sick, or family member's sick, that you'd help them. And, Lord, I think about Roger Gregory's family, God. I ask you, Lord, that you'd help them, comfort them, love on them, Lord, like only you can during their time of loss. Lord, I just ask you, as we enter into this meeting, Lord, that everything that's said and done would be in the best interest of the citizens of Union County, Lord, and most of all, Lord, that would glorify you. And, Lord, for everything you do, we wish you'd give you all the praise, honor, and glory for it. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance, attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask the court to call a roll.
District one, Tracy Campbell.
Present.
District two, Ralph Tucker will be noted as absent. District three, David Sinclair.
Present.
District four, Ben Addy.
Present.
District five, Carolyn Rutherford.
Present.
District six, John Wood will be noted as absent.
Okay, council has a copy of the minutes from our regular meeting on Tuesday, June 21st, as well as Monday, June 27th, in full text, to entertain a motion to adopt the minutes as presented.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Sinclair, second, Ms. Rutherford. Any discussion? Call for the question. District one, yes. District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Okay, tonight is really a sad night in Union County. Councilman Sinclair mentioned the passing of Mr. Roger Gregory. Roger was supposed to receive a service award tonight. Of course, he served in law enforcement for decades. He served five years on the Union County Election Commission and did a great job, of course, there. Outstanding guy. I'd ask you guys to stand with me and join me in a moment of silence for the Gregory family. Thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda is Mr. Robert Williams to discuss danger and risk related to speeding problems in the area of the school, residential, and business area along Whitmire Highway 176.
Hey, good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Superintendent, I'm gonna take a mask off. But anyway, I come before you to talk about the risk assessment that I have been conducting since I've been coming home, retired off of acting duty and stuff. Based on my experience, being a police officer here in Union County and elsewhere through South Carolina, before going back on active duty and retiring, I've been noticing where my daughter and our grandkids stay at. They bought some property off of 176 there. It's just outside the city limits there, but it's in the county. And it's right there where the old, it's right up the front, it's right up the road from the, where the bus, bus repair shop is located at. But that's a 35-mile zone right there. Once you come down that, come down to Enclam, go to the intersection of 215 there, that's a 35-mile zone. Now, 35-mile zones is right at the interest where the cemetery's, business area there, where they go in and pay for whatever you need to do as far as getting your plot there. But what I'm concerned about is that where the school zone started, come out 55-mile zone coming from Whitmire. My thought is that it need to be changed to 35. And then the speed, the speed zone for the school zone, when school is in section, should be 25. Then after that, you leave from the school zone, it should remain 35 all the way to the intersection of 215 and 176. Because as you know, we already had one death there. And two days after that, and that was on a Saturday, there was another incident right there in front of, where my grandkids stay at, where a lady ran in, in the back of a person that was coming from the business area right there, in there. And see, if you know, on the Whitmire Highway, you got a lot of residents. You also have the ball field back off in there. You got the Union City. They got a dumping area where they bring their stuff at, back in there. And then you got other residents that stayed right off the Whitmire Highway. And then you got the residents right there where you can see, see from there. And the South Carolina lost state, even though it's in the county, you got a resident area right there. And the speed limit could be 30 miles per hour. But what I'm trying to do is, like I said, based on my risk assessment that I have taken, that I think the county need to, in my opinion, need to petition the state to try to save, save, save that, save that area and make it more safety for the parents who taking their kids to school in the morning time, for the officer by herself, and sometime a male officer be there, directing traffic and everything. And I think if the speed limit was lowered, it would be safety for the officers who's trying to conduct traffic in the morning time and also in the daytime, and also give more access for the buses to be able to get in to the highway to head back in the Union, to the other schools to pick up students and stuff, not worrying about someone re, you know, rehoming them and stuff. So I'm just asking to see, I'm petitioning, I'm trying to talk to certain people. So I figure that I'll bring it to y'all's attention because I already talked to the first sergeant with the Highway Patrol out of Gaffney. I already talked to the sheriff, me and him sit down. I gave him, you know, some expert advice. I think he bought about four radars. And he have had people out there, even for that wreck happened where the teacher got killed, to try to maintain some kind of, you know, safety there because people just coming in at 35, even big trucks, they're coming in there well over the speed limit. They're running well over 10 miles per hour. And I think since the school's down there, we don't want to mess around and run into a situation where some parents get killed with their kids right next to them. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention to see maybe y'all can petition the court and take another look at the speed zone. And it's not only that speed zone right there at that school, all the, even Mana, people running over speed limit, coming into that school zone by Mana. And also out here on Buffalo. So I'm not only saying about that particular area, about all the areas that, that have school zones. Because from my understanding, I think the sheriff's trying to do, do his best as he can to enforce the, you know, the speed and stuff. I even know that he's kind of shorthanded with officers and stuff. But if we can petition the state to give us more lead weight and lower in the speed zone, then I think that would help him out very, you know, very much with his, his personnel shortage.
Any questions for Mr. Williams?
I appreciate your concern.
Okay. Yeah, Master Sergeant, appreciate you veteran service as well as you come tonight. I'm gonna refer that to David Sinclair, Chairman of the Rose Committee. And David, if you'd work with a county engineer and the sheriff and evaluate that and just come back to council with a recommendation as to whether or not we want a petition via T to make a change.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Councilor.
Thanks, sir.
Sinclair.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Ivey, and my classmate, Karen Rovell. Congratulations on your win.
Thank you.
And Frank, may everything be safe with you and on your new adventure.
Thank you, I appreciate it, man.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next item is consider any requests to fill vacant budgeted positions. I think Mrs. Lawson has something from clerk's office.
Yes, I have one that's working the two weeks notice in my general session. And I'm asking to replace that person in an eventual position.
Make a motion, she can do it. Second motion, Mr. Ivey, second, Ms. Sinclair. Any discussion? Call for the question. District one?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Hold up. Now you, you saying, okay, have you, are y'all getting somebody for that position already? You feeling that position, you got somebody on your mind?
No, ma'am, I always advertise.
Oh, you advertise, okay.
Yes, yes, we always advertise.
Okay, well, yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you, ma'am. Vote unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Any other requests for vacant budgeted positions? Okay, any requests for capital funds? I do have one request that came in a little late. I didn't have time to, to get it into the council packets. But Neil McCown up at the detention center has been working on parking. It's been a little bit of an issue at the detention center, particularly around visitation. He's been working with the public works department to add on some additional space for parking, but it's going to require relocating some of the fencing so that it can actually be accessed. He has a quote from A1 Fence Company of $4,015. Of course, we would need to, this will have to be done through procurement to make sure we follow procurement code. But that's a good budgetary number, $4,015. I'm recommending to council that we approve that from council contingency funds.
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Sinclair, second, Mr. Ivey. Any discussion? Okay, call for the question. District one?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Any other requests for capital funds?
I got a question for Neil. How about the gate?
Good.
Let's go through every time sense, Ann, but we fix it every time.
Thank you.
Okay, consider appointments to vacant positions on boards and commissions. Council has a copy of the sheet with the vacancies. As for the supervisor's appointment, my appointee actually passed away. I'm recommending to council that we appoint Nancy Mahan, who's been pretty involved with airport commission to fill Jeff Reynolds' unexpired term.
Yeah, oh, make a motion.
So we got a motion, Mr. Ivey?
Second.
Second, Mr. Sinclair. Any discussion? All in favor? We'll call for the question. District one?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Okay, who is that?
Okay.
Lady that just woke up.
So Nancy Mahan is the widow of Dr. Mahan, who was a chiropractor in Union, used to be a pilot, housed with everything at the airport. And since he used to be on the commission, when he passed away, she kind of continued to be involved, but she's not a member.
Oh, okay.
So what's the vote for district five?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, any other appointments to boards and commissions? Okay, next item is discuss moving balance of nondepartmental contingency account to the nondepartmental operational continues account for fiscal year 21, '22. As you guys are aware, we're in period 13, where we're closing out basically committed invoices from the prior fiscal year. Miss Ann, do you recall the balance in the, I know you gave it to me, but I didn't bring it. I want to say it's around $58,000. Is it in, is it in my report? 58,274. So I'm requesting council approve, moving it over to operational contingency, which will basically make it available to pay these outstanding invoices so we can get the fiscal year closed out.
I'll make a motion, we'll do it.
Yep, second.
Motion, Mr. Sinclair, second, Mr. Ivey. Okay, discussion?
No.
Well, look at you this time now for a call for the question.
Well, I gotta learn.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, call for the question. District one?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Okay, elected officials, treasurer's office, any update? Okay. Oh, there he is.
Yes, sir.
Don't see you.
I'm being quiet, huh?
All right, any updates from the auditor's office?
Still talking to people.
Clerk's office, Ms. Lawson? Okay, sheriff's out of town, coroner's not here. Okay, moving on to ordinances. This is third reading of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement for Project George Washington. It is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem tax and incentive agreement by and between Union County, South Carolina, and Project George Washington to provide for payments of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain special source revenue credits, authorizing the inclusion of the project site in a multi-county business park and other matters related thereto. Council has a copy of the ordinance in full text. Entertain a motion to adopt for third reading as presented.
Make a motion, second.
Motion, Mr. Sinclair, second, Mr. Ivey. Okay, any discussion? Okay, call for the question. District one?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
And motion carries unanimous. Okay, next item is a quitclaim deed for an unopened street in the Carlisle community. This is second reading of an ordinance to disclaim any alleged interest in a certain right of way to transfer any such interest in and to such right of way to the city of Union to authorize the execution and delivery of a quitclaim deed to the city of Union to authorize future similar transfers to be done by resolution of county council and other matters related thereto. Council has a copy of the ordinance in full text. Entertain a motion to adopt as presented for second reading.
Make a motion.
Motion, Mr. Ivey, second, Mr. Sinclair. Any discussion?
I do, I have a question. I read that, but didn't quite understand it.
Okay.
Can you explain it to me?
So the county partnered with the town of Carlisle and the city of Union to apply for grant funding. If you recall, the Carlisle Finishing Close, they did the waste treatment for the town of Carlisle. So they needed a solution. So we applied for grant funding to actually pump that waste all the way back to Union, which means some pump stations have to be added. This is a piece of property that the city of Union needs to be able to get that infrastructure in place. That's going to benefit the town of Carlisle, but it's also going to benefit the county because it's going to give us an entire corridor that could be opened up for future development.
Got you.
Right, any other questions or discussion? Okay, call for the question. District one?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Okay, next item is multi-county industrial park for Dahl Gen Corp. LLC. This is first reading of an ordinance to develop pursuant to section 41170 of South Carolina Code laws 1976 as amended, a joint-county industrial and business park to be known as the Dahl Gen Corp. LLC Multi-County Park in conjunction with Spartanburg County, South Carolina. Such industrial business park to be geographically located in Union County, South Carolina, to provide for a written agreement with Spartanburg County as to the sharing of the revenues and expenses of the park to provide for the distribution of revenues from the park among the taxing entities having jurisdiction over the park to provide for a user fee in lieu of ad valorem taxation and other matters related thereto. Council has a copy of the ordinance in full text. This is first reading title only. Entertain a motion to adopt as presented.
Make a motion.
Motion, Mr. Ivey, second, Ms. Rutherford. Any discussion? We're stopped at now. Are we ready to make any comments on this, or will we do that at a later date? Your call.
I mean, you can comment on this publicly.
Okay, you want to kind of explain what the project is?
Sure.
Stand up so we can see you.
I'm sorry, sir. Project George Washington is Dollar General. They are expanding at approximately 300,000 square foot to their just-in-1.2 million square foot facility. It is $42 million in new capital investment and creation of 80 new full-time jobs. The operation that's actually going into the new section, I can't really comment on now because they have not released that even to me. But they have acquired another company where they will actually be running this operation out of the Johnsville facility.
Okay, all right. Thanks, sir. Good news. Appreciate y'all's hard efforts. Any other discussion? Okay, call for the question. District one?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Okay, next item is an ordinance related to leasing airport property, limited FBO sale of aviation fuel and other leases and grants. This is first reading title only of a Union County ordinance authorizing the leasing of certain Union County airport real property space improvements and facilities, the granting of certain privileges to limited fixed base operators to sell aviation fuel at bulk rates, the approval and ratification of certain other leases and grants of rights at the Union County Airport and other matters related thereto. Entertain a motion to adopt the title only first reading as written.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, that we hold this, table this until we clarify the information on it.
Okay, so I got a motion to table.
Second.
Second table, okay. Any discussion? So are you, are we clear on what this is, or what's the, just so I know, what's the question?
Well, there's some concern from some of the airport commissioners as to what, what exactly this means. Is it going to be a public airport still, or is it going to be a private airport? I mean, there's, there's just no clarity in the resolution or the ordinance.
Yeah, so this is first reading. This comes from the attorney, basically. We conveyed to the attorney that the airport commission's found a new FBO operator that they want to recommend to the county that we lease the airport to the FBO operator. Okay, that requires an ordinance to do that. So the attorney is drafting an ordinance. They've done for other counties who've actually leased to a fixed base operator to come in and do operations on the facility. So this will be based on the term sheet that's negotiated between the airport commission and the operator. This is just the legal process by which that has to happen. That just can't be a document that's generated between the airport commission and the operator.
They are, they are leasing certain parts of the facility, but not the land or not to do what they...
The hangar, the, what's not to play is operation of the fuel. Mr. Way, well, you're more familiar with the terms of that agreement.
What he's interested in doing, we've got a person who is interested in Phoenix flying. What they're doing is commercial flying. Our problem is right now that they're, what they want to build is two more hangars. So we're working on a contract where they would build two more hangars. Your question is, is the county going to own this, or is the Phoenix Air going to own this? You're always going to, you're always going to be responsible. That should never be a question. You're going to own the airport no matter what. The thing is, is you've got to have businesses and things that operate from there. The fuel sales, all of that will go under him. It's already under him. The other problem we've got, and again, we just got the paperwork back today. We fixing to a million and a half dollars worth of work to the tarmac. And for me to put him in there now is another problem for me because I've got to move 20 people out of the airport hangars and tell them where to go now. So until I can tell them that y'all need to get out of the hangars and start all of this project. But we do have some members of the airport commission that don't agree with the other five members. And my thing is with the other five members, once you get a vote, what happens here when y'all vote? One person cannot change the vote. You can vote against it. You don't have to like it, but you need to support it. And those things go on with whatever you got. I think churches work that way. I can't get anybody to agree on that.
I think, I still think we need to hold it, I mean, neighboring counties, from what I've been able to find out, not everybody's doing it. If it's such a good thing, why wouldn't we do it by now? If we need somebody else to run the airport, then why are you running the airport?
Well, your deal is, is I don't fly passengers. These people here have 11 pilots. They have airplanes that are working commercial. The gentleman that is here is named Jim Langford. You were not, you didn't attend the meeting. I think Frank and, I'll get your name in a minute.
That's right.
What we were trying to do was accomplish this thing so that we could get the people. But we actually got a house that we fixing to have to do something. We thought a $180,000 house that we didn't need, but we needed property for the clear job.
So, so what I would say is, I don't know that the airport commission is 100% in agreement. You know, me and my wife often are in agreement. But the airport commission has negotiated what they believe is a, is a deal with this company, and they've asked to move forward. And this is the legal way to do it. So my recommendation is...
Let me ask one more question while you're doing this.
Yeah, all of a sudden.
This is very ready.
So, all right, my recommendation is, this is first... So, all right, my recommendation is, this is first reading title only of an ordinance that has to have three readings. We got to have full text. We got to have a public hearing. And there's plenty of time to adjust and change course to make sure everybody understands it comfortable. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to meet with the airport commission. But my recommendation is we go ahead and move forward with first reading, and then there's always time to correct or change direction at second or third.
So, Phoenix Air is pricing our fuel right now?
They're pricing the fuel.
Ours is $6.85 a gallon, and Camden's is $5.80 a gallon.
Ours is $6.75 a gallon. And I've been having calls, and not just this week, for the last two weeks, because I thought that was ridiculous myself, but we're the cheapest. They're still selling more fuel, so who is at five percent?
Camden's at $5.80 a gallon.
Whoever's buying gas this week will get a price of whatever you got to pay. Our thing is, is when you buy fuel, the first thing you got to add for taxes is 11% because you got sales tax, you've got your cost of your credit card charges, and the cost of doing business. After that, we just do it a quarter. When I asked him if he wanted to do the fuel, the people that's flying now have to fly. It's the same thing as driving your car. I went yesterday, got me some gas for $3.85, but I'm not happy about $3.85 because I done paid up almost $5.00 a gallon. To say that everything is right or everything is wrong is not right. What he's saying is this is one step to a three-step project. And if you're going to say no, then I need to tell these people. Because if we're going to say no, are we going to do, are y'all going to put up money to match a million and a half? Because we got to match it with 5%. Y'all have to make these decisions. What I'm standing is...
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford. So, yeah, this, you know, we appointed an airport commission to look out for the best interest of the airport and to hopefully have a strategy and a plan to move the airport forward. We believe recruiting a commercial operator would help us with number of operations per day, which opens up additional federal funding for our runway extension, our parallel taxiway, and so on and so forth. So, it's not just kind of a willy-nilly discussion. So, again, my recommendation is move forward with first reading. You guys can sort out the details. Y'all have a joint meeting with the airport commission. You bring in the attorney if you want to. But we got to deal with your motion to table and second, first.
I'm still a motion to table until further information comes in.
So, that's still, that is the motion and second on the floor. So, we're first voting on whether or not to motion to table. I'm going to call the districts. I need a yes or no. If it's yes, then we'll table it. You guys can look at it next month. If it's no, that dies, we go back to the ordinance and decide if we're going to do first reading. So, related to motion to table, District One. Did you understand that, Tracy? I know you're on the phone. Hello?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, so your votes, yeah. District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
No.
District Five?
No.
Okay, it's a tie.
I don't understand it.
The chair actually gives the votes. I'm going to say no. And we're back to the first reading title only of the ordinance. Motion to adopt, Mr. Ivy?
Second.
Second, Ms. Rutherford. Okay, now, any discussion or questions?
I'll just leave, sorry.
Again, I don't, that's going to come at a later date. That term sheet should come from the airport commission. The past operator that we had there was really just doing some limited mechanic work. He didn't pay really anything because it's very difficult to get a certified A&amp;P to come work at a rural airport. So, it's not a money-making deal, but I would suggest you guys, if you're really interested in it, go to an airport commission meeting and sit down so you understand, you know, what's going on, but not necessarily listen to one member to get with the body so you understand it, but...
We know their meeting is held.
Mr. Wade can get you...
We'll meet on the first Thursday of every month at the airport.
Right. Any other discussion or questions?
At what time does he say?
Six.
Usually at six o'clock.
Six, six o'clock. Hook up the Ronnie connection. He might even feed you.
Yeah, if you tell me you're coming, I'll make sure you eat.
All right, any other discussion? Call for the question, District One? District Three? District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Okay, I'm lost, I was talking.
I'm sorry. This is the vote to move forward just with first reading title only of the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, again, we have a tie at 2-2. Chair votes yes. Motion approved first reading title only. Okay, that one took a minute there. All right. Conveyance of county-owned property to Savvy Builders LLC. This is first reading title only of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery. I got the wrong, that one's not in my package. Somebody got a copy of the title?
I got it right here.
I don't know what I did, but I probably handed it out early.
See if that saved me.
Nope, that's in the brochure, great. You got one?
There it is, right there.
All right, this is first reading title only of a Union County ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain interest in and to Union County-owned real property to Savvy Builders LLC and other matters related thereto. Council has a copy of the title only. Entertained a motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Ivy, second, Ms. Rutherford. Okay, any discussion or questions? Okay, call for the question, District One?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Okay, infrastructure credit agreement for Project Pluto. This is first reading title only of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and among Union County, South Carolina, and accompanying all of the county as Project Pluto, including any related entities or sponsor affiliates, the enlargement of the boundaries of that certain multi-county industrial business park previously created by Union County and Spartanburg County as amended, to include certain property located in Union County, South Carolina now, or to be hereafter owned or operated by Project Pluto, including any related entities or sponsor affiliates, and other matters related thereto. First reading title only.
Make a motion.
Second. Mr. Ivy, second, Mr. Sinclair. Any discussion? Call for the question, District One?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimous. Through the old track with that table. I had to think about how to handle that from Robert Schur's horse. Okay, supervisors report. Council has a copy of the report. I'll just run through a couple of them. Top line items, the Advanced Technology Center, that effort's currently stalled. There's some operational funding questions that still need to be worked out between Spartanburg Community College and Union County School District. I would encourage council to continue working on that project. I think that could be a big benefit for the county going forward. Housing, still waiting, working with the developer. Again, there's still some delays in getting plans completed, and particularly related to the dehec permits. I've asked developer for an update on the project. Sewer infrastructure from City of Union to Johnsville, we were not awarded the requested amount from EDA for the project. Currently looking at possibility of breaking project phases, which allows to utilize grant funding as well as applying with Rural Infrastructure Authority for ARPA funds to be, to complete the project. Mr. Nichols, I know I didn't get to participate in the call the other day. Is there any update on that? I know you guys had a discussion. Don't want to put you on the spot, but if there's anything?
We did, but we're probably going after the skip money, the other act of them they committed with.
Skip, okay.
Yeah, and that's real funds.
Okay.
That's what we're looking at. And we still committed our money, the county did, and we still got the power team. The issue is, if we don't do the trankas place itself...
We lose the power team.
We lose the power team. And that's what we're going on.
Okay, thank you for that update. CM's redevelopment, Phase One, environmental analysis completed. We didn't know if our school district wanted to extend our option. That'll expire in November, so we've had discussions with the developer and, you know, basically said they really need to get moving on that. Otherwise, that option expires, and we'll kind of be starting over there. No, she's still there, I think. The Lockhart Boat Ramp Project, we signed off on the contract for that, and Jerry should be issuing a notice to proceed for that shortly. We actually cut the ribbon on the sheriff's office. Facility looks great. Certainly gives those guys a place to work that they can be proud of and kind of puts them all at one complex. Appreciate Jerry's efforts project leading that, as well as Mr. Debo, jack-of-all-trades in terms of wrapping that up for us. I'm not going to read through all this stuff. I did want to highlight, this is in some ways sad, but also exciting, my last council meeting. Wanted to recap some of what we, and when I say we, this really is a team effort over the last seven and a half years, working together. We basically resurfaced over 200 of our county roads. We obtained over $12 million in federal guide share funding, which allowed us to resurface Highway 49, 176, and portions of 72. We constructed new fire stations at Bonham and Carlisle. We renovated our EMS headquarters. We renovated the Temkin Sports Complex, partnered with the school district and the city. We renovated the stadium, built a new fieldhouse, you know, as opposed to having to erect tents on football nights. We renovated and opened the new Union County Sheriff's Office. We appropriated funding to renovate and open the new county government office complex, which will hopefully happen before the end of the year, and a very large, significant project to expand capacity and improve officer and inmate safety at the Union County Detention Center. Funds have been appropriated for that. We revamped our rec sports leagues and upgraded equipment. We partnered with Dixie Youth on our baseball programs. We constructed walking trails in parks in Lockhart. We're in the process of constructing the boat ramp in Lockhart. Economic development for a small rural county, in the last seven and a half years, we've recruited over a half a billion in investment and almost 1,000 new jobs, which Nikki Haley used to say, "South Carolina fights above its weight." Union County fights above its weight in terms of economic development and what we're able to attract to our community, when you compare us to similar rural communities in South Carolina. Education, we created the Union County Community Scholarship Program, which has allowed literally hundreds of students. I get a bill from Annie and those guys, and it keeps going up every year, which is a good thing. That means more kids are taking advantage of that scholarship money and continuing their education in Union, which means they're more likely to stay in Union and help us build our community. We opened the SCC Union Campus with Mechatronics Program. We partnered with USC Union, the delegation, big effort. Some have been talked about for decades, and we brought a nursing school to Union, which hopefully will help us train our healthcare providers for the future. Animal control, a lot of discussion on animal control surprises me in terms of what we've done in the last seven and a half years. When we first started, we had a kill shelter. We probably put down somewhere around 2,000 to 2,500 animals a year. We're now a no-kill shelter, full service and provide response. Major progress. We've made major improvements at the animal shelter. That was apparently some discussion on that lately, but certainly a lot of progress there. Healthcare, I know and have friends and counterparts in rural counties around the state who lost their hospital system. You know, most of the hospital systems have kind of conglomerated and merged. You don't see many rural health systems. A lot of folks have to drive to a neighboring county to get to a hospital. We worked, and county council came together, the citizens. We put millions of dollars into a deal to maintain Spartanburg Regional Healthcare System. Their operations in Union, so we have the Union Medical Center. I certainly, if something happens to me, I want to be able to get to an ER. I don't want to have to wait 30 minutes. So, that certainly has been a blessing. We implemented a wage and compensation plan to attract and retain valuable county employees. We put somewhere between $1.5 and $2 million in county salaries over the last year and a half. That was preceded by a decade of almost no increases, which really put us out of whack with the market and made it harder to retain talent. We put our county back on solid financial footing. You know, when we first started, we were about $2 million in our reserve balance, which gave us, at that time, probably somewhere around a month to two, one to two months' operation. We're now at over $8 million, which gives us, you know, almost six months of operations. All it takes is a couple of large industry leaving, and that $8 million can disappear very quickly. So, it's very important that we have a strong reserve balance. We passed a one-cent sales tax. It was kind of funny. I had a relative, everybody gets their tax bills. Nobody likes to get a tax bill, right? And they, you know, they fussed about it. And a relative told me, said, "My darn taxes went up on me. You guys keep going up." I told him, I said, "Look, I got the computer out, and his taxes were actually lower that year than they were two years ago." I said, "You don't even know what you're paying. I'm going to charge you whatever I want, right? If you don't even know what you're paying." So, that one-cent sales tax was a big property tax relief for owners, and it echoed through the cities as well, the municipalities. City of Union taxes, literally probably a 40% reduction if you live in the City of Union in terms of what you pay in property taxes. So, that was a big accomplishment. We passed that by 54 to 46, which was very good. It's hard to get folks to vote for a new tax, but if you explain it, they understand it, they'll support it. So, what's in the works? We have a new housing development, which if that comes to pass, that's really going to drive commercial development in Union, rooftops, bring businesses, and quality of life type operations. We have industrial-grade sewer. We're in the works. Joe just mentioned of getting it from City of Union to Johnsville, which will open up the entire 176 corridor for industrial and residential development. We'll have something few rural counties have in South Carolina. We'll have industrial-grade sewer from county line to county line. And we're going to get that money one way or another. So, the ARPA funds that are handled through RIA are now called skip. Skip, okay. So, we're going to skip into a new sewer system, hopefully. You know, every industrial spec building, I had folks call me and say, "Why are you guys building buildings? We don't need buildings." Every building we've built, we've sold. The first building that I was involved with, it quadrupled in size. It ended up bringing about $275 million investment. We've sold the next spec building. We're getting ready to build another spec building. You know, Commerce tells us if you don't have a spec building, three out of four prospects won't even look at your county. So, it's necessary, it's required. And, you know, every dollar we put into that spec building, we got it back, plus more, plus the investment, plus the tax base, plus the jobs. It's just the cost of doing business. You know, we got multiple new economic development projects. We haven't closed on them yet, although Pluto, I'm going to call it closed, even though we can't announce it tonight, it's pretty well closed, but, you know, probably over $100 million worth of pending projects. None of this would have been possible without the support of county council, our South Carolina Legislative Delegation, and our federal delegation. You know, I got to give a special shout-out to Lindsey Graham and Ralph Norman. I don't know if you guys are aware, you know, Union County was recently included in Appalachian Regional Commission. That's a big deal. I don't know how we got left out. Spartanburg's in it, Cherokee's in it, but it's a special pot of funding that goes to member counties. And it took, literally, you hear an act of Congress, an act of Congress to get that, to get us added. Lindsey Graham really pushed and sponsored that legislation, and that funding is going Lindsey Graham really pushed and sponsored that legislation, and that funding is going to, it's already opening up grant opportunities. We've applied for grant funding for Lockhart to do some planning. We're doing some parks in Buffalo. I don't know if the city, has the city applied yet for a ARC grant?
I think we can, Frank. I think we've got too many of them out there.
Oh, you got too much cooking. Could be. It could not have been possible without the hard work and dedication of our county employees and staff. You know, we, the elected officials, we're not the ones that make it happen. It's the folks out in the trenches. I want to thank the county employees for their hard work, our commitment of our industrial partners, Lockhart Power. Temkin came alongside of us and helped us sponsor the equipment for the Mechatronics